Hey everybody, welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. Coach Ashley is not here today, but so I'm stepping in into her very large MC shoes for today. We'll see how things go. We've got the, got the team here today. You know, I've got Amanda and Colin and Julie, and we have a couple of special guests here. As you can probably see, Sarah and Janelle, they've got some really awesome, exciting content and training to share with you today. So while we're all coming in here, and this always takes a minute for people to stream in. Once you put in the chat like, where are you from? What part of the world are you connecting from here? And we'd love to hear from you. We're gonna have this session here with this training with Janelle and Sarah. And then if you have questions about it, of course, along the way, drop those in the Q and A. There's a little Q and A button at the bottom of the Zoom toolbar there. Just hit that and put your question in there. If you put it in chat, we'll probably miss it because the chat is like super fast all the time. But yeah, drop your questions in Q and A along the way. And then if time permits here, we'll have a kind of a anything goes session for Q and A. You can ask any question generally, but so yeah, we're super excited for Janelle and Sarah to be here. So yeah, you want to kick it off, Janelle?
Yes, absolutely. My name is Janelle Anderson. I am from Western North Dakota. Got a couple of North Dakota people on here, Greg and Amanda. Hello. Okay, um, had to do that shout out. So we are bringing you some amazing things today. But before we get into it, I am just going to tell you a little bit about Simple Grace Collective. Sarah and I are Young Living brand partners. We actually met in Hawaii at Dream 51,000. Sorry, it's getting, you know, a while ago. Anyway, we met there. We are cross-team. We are not on the same team, but we are part of the Young Living family. And we decided that we needed some systems in place. We went searching for that. We were introduced to Get Oiling and all that that has to offer. And we are just so thankful that we found it. We had a little bit of a struggle as we learned it. And when we learned it, we decided to offer what we had learned into different courses and resources. We always have freebies. We always walk you through that. And so that's where the Simple Grace Collective came from. Sarah, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Sarah Hayden Belt. I'm from the middle of Nebraska. There's probably not going to be a ton of people that are going to say I'm from Nebraska. Um, but yeah, uh, you know, we're both, we both sat on Get Oiling for months, which a lot of people, it seems like a lot of people sometimes do that and scared to really get into it. But once we did, it is amazing and it put everything in one spot for us. And that's what we like to, to share with others, teach others right along with. I mean, it is amazing, but we know that it's a lot. So that's what we love to share about how to make it a little bit easier.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. So am I popping up? I see Sarah pops up when she was talking. I just want to make sure. I am going to be doing the screen sharing today. We are so excited to talk to you about this amazing funnel that we have all the resources for you guys to use for free because that is who we are. But we're going to walk you through it and I'm going to just make sure. Okay, perfect. So you guys, Sarah is going to start us into this. You get the privilege of seeing my whole desktop. I just want you to know that you're so grateful for this disaster. Okay. All right. So Sarah.
So we're going to walk you through, like Janelle said, we're going to walk you through a funnel. We're going to walk you through a funnel. And before you tune out right away, because you don't know what a funnel is, we're going to show you exactly what it is. We're going to simplify it for you. And it is super impactful when you're bringing in leads. So before we walk you through how it actually works, we're going to show you the front end of what someone new to Young Living, that you're wanting to start the conversation with. We're going to show you a greenwashing funnel. We all have heard about greenwashing. If you've been with Young Living for any amount of time, so we're going to show you from a new lead, how you work the entire way through to become a customer with Young Living. So the first thing that Janelle has are Instagram stories about greenwashing.
Or Facebook stories.
Or Facebook stories.
You know, they work for both. So this is just greenwashing. This, all of these things that we are showing you on this front end really quick are things that you guys get to utilize yourself. You get all of these resources. Okay, we're giving all of these away. I just put this in a PDF so you could see it really quickly. But this is an editable Canva template. And so it's all about greenwashing. There's a few bonus things at the end that you can use, don't have to use, all of that kind of stuff. The next thing is, woo-hoo, let's get back to Get Oiling. This is where we are directing them to is this beautiful landing page. If you guys did not know, Greg has been knocking it out of the park with upgrades to Get Oiling. This is one of the new landing pages. You can change the whole background. You can make it. It's just Greg. Like here.
One quick point before we go, there's like this weird gray box on the right side of your screen. Are you seeing something? There we go. Okay, it was kind of covering up.
Thank you. It was all of our pictures, our beautiful faces that I could see. All right. Thank you for that. So this is the greenwashing landing page. This is where you are going to direct people to get them into the information that you have to offer. We have a confirmation page. Obviously it shows our faces right now, but you can use this. Don't worry, we're going to show you how to use all of this stuff. And this is the piece de resistance of it. This is the greenwashing info page that is already built out for all of you to use and is amazing. So before we get to that stuff, Sarah is going to explain to you what a funnel actually is. Because you gotta know, right?
And specifically this greenwashing funnel, because greenwashing is such a hot topic right now. And it really is for good reason. So as a Young Living brand partner, you are aware of maybe the confusion and some of the misinformation out there in the world when it comes to natural living and what natural living really means. So given our commitment as brand partners, Young Living customers to natural living, we are uniquely qualified to start conversations about this topic. And it is a really powerful topic, a lead-in conversation when you want to do this, introduce Young Living to potential customers. It means, it means setting them up. It means showing them all about seed to seal. There are so many conversations that can start just from the topic of greenwashing. And so we're going to talk about this funnel, this greenwashing funnel and what it is made. So what is a funnel? It's basically just an automated way to give away relevant information like greenwashing. It can be any topic that you want to start out with. We're going to go greenwashing today to someone who is looking for that information right now. So your leads. And they get freebies from you and you get to have their email address, which makes it very easy to follow up with them to get them started with Young Living. And it is an automated way to do this, which saves so much time. So much time. And it is, it helps you to organize, it helps you to organize everything in the backend. If you're used to Get Oiling, to have your contacts pulled in, in one place is what we're going to do with this. So let's go ahead and hop right in. We're going to hop into the backend. Janelle's going to share a screen again, and we're going to hop into the backend of how this funnel is set up to show you exactly how simple it is and how easy it is to get this to your leads.
Okay, so this first part that we are on, this is what you are going to get. I already showed you what this looks like as the view. This is a greenwashing page that we created for you guys to utilize with this whole thing. So the way that this actually works, let's go back to this, is you would take these Canva templates, this editable Canva templates that we have, and you would throw them in your Instagram stories because you want people to know that you use Young Living. But guess what? We're all about educating. The majority of us are here at Team YL. And so you would use these stories in different ways. Just to go a little closer, you guys can see that it says insert poll. If you are not trying to get people to interact with your stories, then you are totally missing out on an amazing function of how to do that. So you would pop these stories into your Instagram or Facebook accounts. And then from there, you are going to give them a link. And that link, we're going to say, you always want them to come back to your Get Oiling website so that even if they happen to click home, they can still find you. They can still find some information. So you're going to link this in your bio. If you're on Instagram, if you're on Facebook, you can also put this, some, write a post up about this and put the link in your comments and so that they can get to it. Now, once they click on your link, this is where it's going to take them. This is the beautiful landing page that we created, but thanks to Get Oiling and their upgrades, we were able to just kind of customize it to how we wanted. And again, this is what it looks like on the front end. This is what they will see. So when you are in here, you go to Settings. These are some of the things that you're going to want to do. We have a name for it. You can change this. Once you guys grab this resource, this free resource. Now here is where you have the option to do two things. Sarah, do you want to go into that just a little bit?
Yeah, when you, so when someone says, man, I really want some more information on greenwashing. So they're going to get that landing page and they're going to put their email address in. So you have two, two ways to, a simple way, if you're very new to funnels, and one that goes a little more in-depth, which we would actually recommend. The simple way is to, they put their information in, they get redirected instantly to your freebie. Okay, so if Janelle goes back into Settings there, sorry, you just got to, you can, you don't need to have a campaign. If you don't have a campaign written up, we want, this is the base of what you, of what you need to do. If you are just getting into funnels, you can, no campaign there. There is an option to put a campaign there to put, to start an email campaign, which is what you want to do. But the easy button, leave that blank, no campaign. You can put a tag in there so you can organize these prospects in the backend of your Get Oiling. And then right here is just a pop-up that says, I'm so excited to share more information with you. This is going to be coming in email. Now, if you don't, if you aren't using an email campaign yet, just uncheck it. It's, it's not a big deal to uncheck that there. And then if you scroll down, there's an option to say to website custom page. You can pick the custom page, which is the greenwashing page that you're going to get for free from us. You can select that page and you can put the page in there. So automatically they put their email and you have them in your contact list. They automatically get redirected to that freebie where then you would be able to follow up with them. Okay, easy.
Yeah, sorry, just throw out there. We have no campaign selected, but Young, or Young Living, Get Oiling has a new prospects campaign already set up. So at the very least, you could, if you're going to still funnel them straight to that greenwashing page, just like we just set up, you could still have a campaign on. So they start getting emails from you. Now, just a little tip, you can take any of the Get Oiling email campaigns that they have. You can copy them, hit the copy button. We're not going to show you how to do that. There is many trainings about how to do this. And then you can go in and you can edit that campaign to reflect whatever you want. Just so you know, it's there. It's on the backend. We highly recommend that you do something in that spot if you can. And Get Oiling already has a new prospect set up. Just throwing that out there.
Yep, perfect. So then after that, they are redirected automatically to the page that is full of the greenwashing information.
Yep, this one. Okay, so then from there, you could also have it, instead of them going straight to the greenwashing, if you have an email set up in place where you're going to send that, that resource link to your greenwashing page, you can just add a confirmation page. We are including that in the resources. So if you want to take this and edit it and just use it for yourself, you sure can. It's set up for mobile and desktop. That's there, just aware. We're not going to go into this. We want you to just know that it's there. If you know what this means and you want to use it, it's at your fingertips. If you are like, that is too much, go back to what Sarah just talked about. Don't overcomplicate this. Keep it simple. As you learn this system, then you can add more in. All right. So once they fill out this beautiful landing page, however you direct the information, whether they do this and then it takes them straight to the greenwashing page or you've set up an email that's going to send them the URL, it is going to give them this beautiful greenwashing page. On the backside of it, what you need to be doing is know that everything is set up to be for desktop and mobile. We already took care of all of that for you guys. This goes into greenwashing and all of the things, all of the things around it. Now, when you get to the end, this is literally the only two things that you need to do is you might want to change this. You would just click on it. And then you can edit the words to maybe be better suited to your voice and who you are. Then you can click this picture, hit replace, add in your own picture of whatever you want in there. And then you can change this as well. Now, this let's connect button, just to show you on the backend of what it does. It just, well, this one is set up differently, but you could just do hashtag contact and they can send you a message that way. So that is a great resource right there. You can actually direct them to any place you want from this point. You can send them anywhere on your website. You decide where you want them to go, but just to contact is a great thing in that spot. I'm going to save it. So that's in there for you guys. And that is really the funnel. Now, I say that's really it, and that's the funnel, but it's not. Because what happens after this point, when you have given your potential leads, this amazing information, you have to follow up with them. I know sometimes we hate that word in the sense of that, okay, I gotta do something. But this is why using Get Oiling makes this so much easier. You use the campaign, the new prospects campaign that they have set up. If you want to edit it to your voice, go ahead and do that. If you don't have time for that right now, you can still be getting in their inbox with that amazing campaign. You want to follow up with them. Make sure that you are contacting them. Hey, just want to make sure that you got that information on greenwashing. Do you have any questions? Is there anything more that I can offer you? Follow-up is key for your business and for growth and for taking care of these leads and fostering that relationship and that connection with them. Sarah, I know I'm putting you on the spot. You shared the other day with me about an audience versus community. Can you just?
Yeah.
Putting her on the spot.
So when you're showing up in your social media and Get Oiling makes it very, very easy to change your audience into a community. An audience is someone who will watch you, who will follow you. But a community is someone who will interact with you, who will buy from you, who will share what you are saying with their friends. So when we are turning our audience, which is just you sharing and not a lot of interaction, you can turn that into a community very, very easily using Get Oiling. Because Get Oiling and these, you know, these freebies that we're doing and the funnels are such a great way to open up that conversation. And that's what we want to do. That's the whole goal. If you are sharing on social media is to open up those conversations. We want a community, someone that who, who will interact completely with us.
Agreed. So good. So that is the funnel in a nutshell. You guys got to tell us, was that confusing? Was that just, you got it? It was straightforward. You kept, we kept it as simple as we could for you. So now we want to introduce one final thing. Do not let this muddy, what we have already told you. We just want to show you a way that actually Sarah and I are using this because if you are more savvy and if you feel more comfortable where you want to add more stuff in, we're going to show you exactly how Sarah and, and I are using this whole thing.
Yeah, Janelle's going to pull up the page of how we, it's a different page. And if you have, if, I know that we have a lot of Simple Grace people in here already. And there's, that have already grabbed our resources. If we create resources, we have a simple start to Get Oiling that shows you how to create a homepage, create, we, it is, we create a get to know me email campaign. And we have a simple start to natural living PDF. We have a way to work all of this in and get that conversation, taking it to the next level. If you are new to Get Oiling, do that simple funnel. Get the simple funnel. Wrap your head around that simple funnel. But if you've been in this little bit with us or if on your own, you don't have to be part of anything Simple Grace either. But if you have a little bit of knowledge on the backend of Get Oiling, this is how we are using it and it works so incredibly well.
So this page looks exactly the same as what we introduced you to before. But what happens is that when you get to the end, we are giving them another option to click through. We are going to go more in-depth tomorrow in Simple Grace Collective's Facebook group on how we utilize this, because most of the people in there, at least have either, like Sarah said, purchased some of these extra things or they have access to them if they choose to. And so we're going to go into the front end of this, of where we got to here, to this point. But we want to show you how we are using this. So when you get to the end of the greenwashing page, if you're taking it up to the next level, it says, ready to learn more. I have an eye-opening video. It is only four minutes, but it is going to change everything for you in a good way. So then they would click, I need to see this video. From this video, it takes them to a natural living page. Now, right here, we are offering this guide that we have that Sarah and I have created. It's a simple start to natural living. If you have that, would you just post in the chat? How much you love that guide? I'm not trying to like toot our own horn, but it's really good. It's really, really good. So then it just says, why simple start to natural living? It gives them this amazing video. If you haven't watched this, it's from Richard Blissbrook. He is so amazing. This video is mind-blowing. And then we just go into it a little bit more down here. And then we say, yes, I want the info. This is going to give them access to that simple, simple start guide that we have this, oh my goodness, the simple start to natural living guide. And then it has a let's connect. So there's just a little more, little bit more options on it. And so it just gives them the next level. So again, we do not want to confuse you. If, like Sarah said, if you need simple, take that first part that we just walked through and use it. It is so, so good. And then when you decide you want to kick it up another notch, if you want to add a little more. So we're going to be honest. Coach Ashley said, guys, you're trying to give so much stuff that it might be a little overwhelming to people who are jumping in. So then we were like, okay, come back. We're going to do this. We can do this. So we came back with it. But then we also knew that there were people who had those extra resources that we already talked about. So we wanted to show you that there's another way to kick it up to the next level. Okay. I don't know.
Oh, that's exciting. Hey, would you be able to show us like what this looks like, what your funnel looks like from the beginning? You know, the, the one you were showing originally. And there's some people asking, how do you get this, right? Did you make a resource bundle for this?
We did. We made a resource bundle. Should I go pop that in the?
Yeah, let's pop that in the chat. We lost the request for that.
So with that resource bundle, you're going to get the story templates, the Canva story templates. You're going to get the landing page, the greenwashing landing page, where they will put their information in. And then you will get the, you will get a confirmation page. In case you wanted to use that, you do not have to have that. And then you also get the greenwashing information page to be able to follow up with them. And then tomorrow, we're going to show you in our, in our group, Simple Grace Collective on Facebook. We are going to go into the, the in-depth where we are giving them that video, that four-minute video for them to watch about natural living. And we are going to walk you through our simple start, our simple start PDF. It's a PDF that says, you know, step one, dish the fragrance, step two. And it has different steps for them to be able to start the natural living in a really, really easy way. And that PDF is complete gold. It is, it is, it is really, really amazing. So we're going to walk you through that, but that's in our Facebook group. We're going to do that tomorrow. If you guys want to jump into our Facebook group, we can get that link in the chat for you.
So I'm going to walk you guys just through this funnel from start to finish on how it would look to a potential lead. This is going to go into your Instagram or Facebook stories. You can use them all. You can use partial. There's a couple extra of how I used it. So you can choose to use that or not. And so you are going to put this into your Instagram, Facebook stories. And then you are going to link out your Get Oiling landing page, which is going to be this. It is going to be whatever you, you're, your beginning of this for your website is. And then this is what it's going to look on the backend. Can you stick that in your bio? So people are going to come here and I will just show you. They're going to put their name in because they're like, yes, I want anything you offer because you have provided we, with so much value on your social media that I need everything that you have. Tell me more. So they're going to click, tell me more. This is going to pop up if you choose to use an email to deliver the next greenwashing page. Okay? If you choose not to, you are going to link it to this right here. And it is going to be the greenwashing page. So this is going to pop up after they give you their info. And so they are going to have all of this at their fingertips. And then at the end, they can click, connect with you so that they can give you that stuff. Greg, was there anything else specific more than that? Or should I?
No, I think that's good. The link you shared actually goes to the landing page itself. Was that supposed to be the resource bundle? That's the only other thing I saw.
Yeah, that was. Hey, guess what? We're not, not to you, Greg. I'm not saying that. I know you know that because we talk to you all the time about our mess-ups, but we will fix that.
Sounds good. But yeah, it's what simplegraceco.com/green, I think is the URL right now. It's going to the landing page, but we'll get the resource bundle connected after the call probably.
Yep. Did that yesterday. I'm going to claim that one.
Well, we're getting some questions coming in here. So yeah, right at the top, we've got Allison who says, do you recommend putting this in your link tree and your IG bio link? Right now I have my link tree in the bio. I know Instagram requires you to only have one link, I think, right? Is that right? You can only have one link in your IG bio?
Yep.
So maybe that's the question there. Like, what would you put there? Would you put this in the link tree? Or would you just do this or?
I, I think if you are, if you put a post or if it's in your stories and that's something you're talking about right now or today, I would definitely give them that direct link right in, in the bio. Because you could change that bio link however many times you want to change it. If you, if that's where you want it, you're really talking about it, you know, on that day, go ahead and stick that direct link in the bio where they can just sign up for it right away. Of course, you can put it in your link tree. The easier that you can make it for people, the better. If you can err on simplicity to just have one link, go get that link. Sometimes that's better. But then, you know, you can always change that back and put it into your link tree. And then no matter what, if you're talking about a different subject, they can say, hey, what is greenwashing in your link tree? So.
Yeah. Okay. So it looks like I might have, I might have misjudged what was on that landing page. Somebody said they downloaded it and it's actually working. So fantastic. Never mind.
Look at it. So it looks very similar to the landing page that is set up for the actual greenwashing funnel that we're offering. So I can see why there was like a little bit of, but hey. Right. Hey, I just want to throw out there that Get Oiling has a training on making your own link tree on your website. Because you guys, if you can get people to your website, that means they can click through stuff and still see all of your things. And so I highly recommend that you find that training. They have a bunch of editable templates and all that kind of stuff. So do that.
I will link that up here in the chat. Actually, I have that right here. So I'll put this in.
Now, I will tell you that I, like Sarah said, if I have something that's very like, right now, I'll just put that, that link to that landing page directly in there. But after a day, after it falls off of my stories, then I go back to whatever my link, I don't want to say link tree, my Get Oiling link in bio page.
Cool. Let's see, Allison, this is sort of, I guess, related maybe. She says, I guess this would mean you need to promote the heck out of this if it's going to be your IG bio link. So yeah, you just talked about that here and change it. Okay, so Juliette has a question. So on our homepage, created with the templates from Simple Grace, do we show the greenwashing link at the top of the page instead of the simple start natural living guide?
Oh, that's, I mean, that's completely up to you. You can, you can put freebies wherever you want to put freebies on, on your, on your page. You can put it in one of the three boxes, the three boxes to send people. It would work there if you want to change that out, you know, where you're talking about that. Absolutely. That's, that's a, you know, completely your preference.
Awesome. Okay. So that one's answered here. So Camille here, does the greenwashing funnel need to be in the Facebook, Instagram stories or going to be in a post? And why would you recommend stories?
People watch stories. They look at stories. And so we believe that you should be posting stuff on your wall, whether it's Instagram or Facebook. But we also just want to say that if you are not using that story option, that you are really missing out on a very good way to gather leads and for people to get to know you. Feeds, I would say are like, they feel a little bit more formal. Stories are really like who you are, really dig into it, that kind of thing. It's also where honestly, you are going to sell more, I, I'm going to say sell because we do sell Young Living to people. You are going to sell more products or make customers out of people by getting in your stories and letting them know who you are. Because really, when they're, when we're being honest, they're not buying the products because of, they need this product. For the most part, they're buying you. They see you first. They have to, they have to understand if they're going to trust you. They have to understand if you are going to really help them. And if you can answer it, we have a couple more questions, just so you know, in our group, in our unit section, just let's go through connection. But they want to know that you are really there for them and that you really are being truthful when you can offer them things. And so we want to say, get in your stories to connect. Now, I understand if you don't use your stories, that it might seem hard, but it's really not. People just want to know who you are. So share your daily life. And even though our daily lives are probably consumed with using Young Living all the time, show other parts of your life too. If you got off track, sorry. If you got off track, sorry.
I was, I would say too, if, if you're not, if you don't use stories, then you don't use stories. Make up a post and, and put some of that information into a post and you can always, however you'd like to direct people to the freebie. Do it.
Yeah.
We both love stories.
But if you jump over in our group, I might make you a graphic just to post on your actual wall and feed if you really want.
Okay. Yeah, I think Amanda actually linked up your Facebook group in the, in the chat too, in case you missed that. So scroll up a little bit and there should be a, a link there.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, someone else, I'll reply by text here too, but someone else asked the question, how, not sure how to get this resource. Just fill out the name and email on that simplegraceco.com/greenpage. Yes. All you have to do and you'll get, is it an email? I think it follows up. Yeah. Awesome. Awesome. Cool. I think that's it for Q and A unless there's anyone else who has any other questions in here, or if you had anything else, um, that you'd like to go today, certainly can. I'm happy the, the new landing cha, uh, landing page changes made it a little bit simpler to kind of get around there and, and do these things. But yeah, this is a, an amazing free resource here that you two are providing. So very excited for everyone to take advantage of this. And yeah, definitely hop over to their Facebook group and, and join in the conversation. Lots of good stuff happening in there. I I peek my nose in occasionally and look at what's going on and all good things.
And we appreciate that because he usually sets us straight on stuff.
Yep.
I, I'm like the technical guy, right? Wait a minute. No. So, no, that's good. Cool. Yeah, if there's any other Q and A, certainly drop them in there. And we can do an open Q and A, like if it's not related to this, if you just have a good oiling question, you can certainly just pop it in there or put it in the, um, put it in Q and A. We'll take a look at it. Uh, I don't think we have any uh, website reviews lined up today, but um, hey, here's another question. Thank, thanks Kimberly. So your, the question is, what are your thoughts on a texting campaign instead of email? I'm new to get oiling and have to, have yet to do this part of the setup. I do not tend to open the majority of emails. Some concern that this info would get lost with new prospects. Do you have any thoughts on text versus email in terms of this uh, greenwashing funnel?
So as fellow brand partners, we can probably speak into this, but this doesn't mean that it is your situation. This is just what we are seeing. Um, I come from Project Broadcast. Sarah never dove into that, but I did. And one of the main reasons that I went to get oiling, so I could bring everything in-house and use their full system that they have at our fingertips and not be here and here and here and here. And that's what get oiling solved for me. What I have found is that I am more now going towards email because I see a better response from my customers, from my leads and from my team. And that may not be you. The great thing is, is get oiling has that where you can do that. You can set up any of these campaigns as texts. Um, and that's the great feature on the backend of what get oiling offers is if you have a better response in text, then you just change that to do it. Um, we're just going to say on the landing page for the greenwashing, make sure that you click the my phone. We had that shut off on it. So if you want to collect their phone number, make sure that you click that on the backend in the settings and just make sure that it's on there.
I can actually demo that here quick. I have that screen up to show what you were talking about with the campaign editing and um, clicking through there. So let me, um, let me pull this up here. So if you want your campaign, so the landing page that you provide, once you fill out the, the landing page, um, to get your but resource bundle and you've got their landing page in your account, you can find it under landing pages over here in the menu. Um, and I don't have that one in here, but I'll just pull up, um, another sort of random one. And I'll show you what she's talking about in terms of the the field. So like, if you click the settings button under here where I was showing you, um, there's, you can require and whether or not to show a phone. So I think in the landing page that you have set up, the show phone box is not checked. So you could do that, um, turn that on and then, um, you could even require the phone number if you wanted to, like if you were, say, hey, this is going to be a text campaign. You can totally do that. Uh, and next, so like, once you have a campaign connected and I'll just, um, pick one of these here and, and edit it. There is a setting, uh, when you're editing the campaign details here where you can choose how this is sent. So there's this preferred sending medium, which is, do you want this campaign to be sent by email only, text only? Um, using the contacts preference, there's a setting inside the contact. Um, where you can choose whether they get, you know, whether they get campaigns by email or text. And then these, these two preferred settings too. So those are useful, like for example, if you set it to email preferred, which a lot of people do, um, because it tends to save, save the marketing credits instead. The system it uses fewer to send emails than it does texts. Um, but what will happen here is if somebody doesn't have an email address on their contact or they happen to be opted out of emails, but they do have a phone number on file, it will send them a text instead. Otherwise it tries to send email first. So those are some nice options. Basically gives you a backup plan. Odds are higher that your message will get through in one format or another, if you do it that way. So um, the other place to find campaigns, in case you don't go through editing the landing page here, click on contact settings here and then click on campaigns. And then the, that campaign will show up in the list and you can, uh, click the little pencil, which will take you right to this page where you can choose preferred sending medium. If you really want to get fancy and you're on the premium plan uh, or higher, you can actually change, like if you open up these advanced features here in case that's collapsed. You can choose, well, actually you don't even need to open it up. That's right. You can choose whether to send individual messages one way or the other. So you can actually set up a campaign that does both. Like if they put in both their email and their text, you could send them an email and then, you know, 10 minutes later, the next day you send them a text. So you could have, um, have both of them integrated in there. That way you're kind of covering both bases. In case you don't know, but like Janelle was saying, I think it's very specific to, um, who's in your list. You know, some people like to open emails. Some people like, they don't like them at all. They've got 7,000 unread emails. Uh, you know, there, those are the people you probably don't want to email, but if they have texts, awesome. Um, it's kind of, kind of based on your audience and what you do. And you can see some of that. Like you can see on your dashboard, who's clicking and opening emails. Um, you know, system activity will show some of that, like clicking the link and opening the mail and all that. So you can kind of get a gauge of what's going on uh, in terms of what's working for your communication. So, um, texting has, in the recent, the, the mobile carriers are making it a little bit more challenging to get texts through. They're becoming, you know, they're filtering more. So texts that sound salesy or have free or, you know, salesy sounding language in them are tending to not be delivered as much too. So that's something you know, keeping text messages super conversational, like you're actually texting it one-on-one to somebody that will really help, um, delivery there. So yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
In the future, do you think that maybe that could be a button that they get to click what is their preferred method of communication?
That's a cool idea. Yeah.
Sorry.
Wish list that thing.
Some more work on you.
Hey, no problem. That's, that's where all these fun ideas come from. Like this whole system is just people's ideas. So it's really cool. Uh, yeah. So going back over, answered that question. Okay. So it actually was Kimberly's question, follow-up question of that. Does get oiling have an option for the lead to say whether they want to be contacted by text or email? Uh, while they don't have a setting right now, but they can control. That's a great suggestion there. Let me, I should have kept my screen share going here. You can actually, when you're editing a contact, um, I'll just pull up some random person in the contact manager here. When you're editing the contact, there is a way to send can, or choose, are your campaigns sent by email, text or both? Uh, and that coordinates with that other setting over here. I was showing you with the campaigns. If you have your campaign set up so that it is, um, email or text, use the context preference, then that will follow that context preference. So you can do that. It's just, uh, you have to do the, the work in this case of choosing their preference. Um, and yeah, I can go from, or from there, but a way for them to choose it would be pretty cool too. It sounds like maybe something in automation could take care of, do some thinking about that. Uh, cool. Okay. Let's see. So I'm going through the new prospect campaign. That's, uh, this is a question from Amanda. I'm going through the new prospect campaign, which is a built-in campaign from get oiling, just, um, so you know. And the second email has a link in it. How do I see where the link takes them? Uh, you can either send it to yourself. So send the campaign to yourself, or if you'd like email our support team, we have some sample links set up. Um, so you can see what's in there in the, in the message. So there's a tag that's actually converted to a page on your website that is, um, used in that new prospects campaign. So yeah, reach out to support or send it to yourself. And we'll get that sorted for you. Uh, let's see. Sheila has the same question, boys. It's a popular topic. Is there a way to ask in the landing page with the preferred form of contact, email or text? That's another great way of doing that, Sheila. So we'll get that on our wishlist here. Uh, let's see here. Kimberly, yes, context preferences is manual selection. You're making their info. Uh, and is there a way to send the new prospects campaign to myself and not have to wait each day to see it? Yeah, you can do that. So, um, let me go back into the campaign list. I'll show you, uh, probably the easiest way to do this is if you want to do this by email, um, so make it first, you'd make a copy of whatever campaign. I think you were talking about new prospects. So let me search for new prospects here. And then, yeah, right here. So then I click this little icon here, this little stack sheets of paper. Uh, looks like copying, it's a copy of a new campaign. So what you can do is give it a new name. Um, and then it'll make a copy of it. And I think I already have a copy of it here. So I'll just grab one of these instead of making another copy, but you'll get a copy of it under whatever name you want to. And then just come in here and change all the days to day zero and then add that campaign. It's probably a good idea to customize this campaign anyway. Um, so this gives you a good head start. Uh, you know, of course you want to probably change the day numbers back, but if you change them all to day zero, then what that'll do is you'll get, what is it? Six messages right away after you send the campaign. So, um, that'd be, you know, you get a little burst of emails. You can read them all, click them all and, uh, see how that goes. So probably the, the best way of doing that. And then while you're in there, then because it's a copy, you can actually modify this and make it fit your voice a little bit more. Um, you know, for example, if you don't want to say, you know, successfully send out our newsletter, change that to whatever you want to. Um, yeah, you can keep it all, keep it all or modify it all or whatever you want to there. So cool. Uh, let's see. One other question here so far. And again, if anyone has any other questions, keep them coming here. The Allison says, how do I clean up my get oiling for daily tasks? I've fallen behind since I was overzealous and how often to follow up with people. Is there an easy button to batch delete all or change? All how often to connect with. Um, so one question, I, I guess a kind of a question about that, like they, I think those are two different features that you might be talking about there. So like the, it sounds like you might have done or added a follow-up plan to people. And so what you can do, you can actually bulk remove those in your contact manager. Click on the manage link over here, click on actions and then go to this bulk contact actions. And if it was a follow-up plan, it probably was, let's say, you know, we did the monthly care calls for a year and applied that to your team of 500. That would be, you know, probably a lot of these reminders that you're going to be getting. Um, so you choose the follow-up plan you want to remove and it's a remover from everybody. Okay. Thanks for the, and then you hit remove and then hit apply. Uh, and that will like delete all those upcoming to-dos for people. Allison just followed, followed up and says it's not a follow-up plan. So, um, if there is, well, one note about that, I think what you might be talking about is right here, the to-do box. These will eventually, if they, I think they only stay overdue for like 30 days, something like that. And then they eventually will go away. So unless you've got a whole lineup of future ones coming, they'll eventually disappear. Otherwise, um, they ha, they can be bulk, uh, bulk deleted through the follow-up plan. If you manually added them, um, to-do items, then, then that's something else. So okay, thank you for the clarification. This is for the contacts you may wish to reach out to. So that appears down here and that's also this little rating next to each contact. Let me go back to the contact manager. There's a rating system, a contact rating system, which you can see here, uh, on every contact. This one's got a rating. Um. So if you click on that, what this does, this feature allows you to get automatically reminded of a contact um, to reach out to them every so often. Like this is off, of course. Um, this will remind you once a year. This will remind you quarterly, monthly, weekly and every three days. So let's say you've got a huge database, got a thousand people in there and they're all set to remind you every three days. Well, that, you might not be able to keep up with that. I believe, uh, let me double check on this, but yes, okay. See, wrong window. Um, you can, uh, bulk change those. So you can either like filter, using the filters button or do this select here. Uh, individual contacts and then go to your ball contact actions. And then change your contact rating, uh, here and then apply and it'll bulk apply that rating to, uh, whatever contacts that you have selected or filtered and tell you how many it is up here, how many action or how many contacts it's going to take. So yeah, you can get rid of, uh, those if you have too many in your list. And, uh, yeah. Awesome. Okay. I think that's, that's all the Q and A I'm seeing so far. Certainly if there's more, um, drop them in there, but, um, but yeah, so back to the awesomeness that you guys, uh, shared today. Like again, it's the, the simplegraceco.com/green is where you can get in with all the wonderful goodies. Um, anything, anything else you want to add here? Otherwise I think we might, um, we can wrap it up here. Took her a little bit early, but that's, that's all right.
Yeah, I just want to, um, make sure that everybody jumps over into our Facebook group for the level up of that whole funnel. If you want to take it to the next level, we're going to go into that tomorrow. Sarah and I will be sharing all about that. As well as maybe offering some other stuff that we can't say right now. So.
That sounds exciting. Can't wait.
Get your interest peaked.
Awesome. Cool. Oh, very nice, uh, message here from Donna in the chat. Jared, Janelle and Sarah, you've given me courage. Thank you for the freebie and the explanation and as to the hows of it. So yeah, this is, this is cool. Lots of questions about what time tomorrow? Maybe we want to fill that in. Did, did you just cover that for your?
You know, Sarah and I, we're planners some, sometimes. Um, Sarah, you pick a time. That would be helpful, wouldn't it?
We're usually at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we can, can always catch the replay. It'll be in the group, but I mean, live is cool too. So.
And 10 o'clock central?
Just, yes. An o'clock central.
Yep, yep. Central time. Cool. Awesome.
Great question.
Cool. Well, anyway, thanks everybody for coming. Uh, it was a great, um, great time today and hopefully all these resources are very helpful for you. So thanks, everybody. We'll see you next week.